The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, President Reed,
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-three present.
A quorum being present. We will be led today in prayer by Reverend Charles Norris, pastor of St. James AME.
Amen. Would you rise? Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank and we praise you for this is the day that you've made and will rejoice and be glad in it. Now, Father, as the rain has fallen outside, we pray that those things that come from you, that they may rain inside as we celebrate champions today, as we sit between Mother's Day and between Earth Day. Father, let us look to you, the master champion. Let us be champions of peace and love and courage and understanding and wisdom. Guide us in the wisdom and the knowledge that only comes from you so that we might witherly magnify you, but most of all, that we might love one another as you have loved us. And then we will give you all the praise, the glory, and we will reap the fruits of the benefit of your relationship because you are of your goodness and your mercy. It is in your great name we pray and we thank you, Lord.
Let's give Reverend Chuck Norris a round of applause. That was a really good opening. We'll spin with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for our courtesy resolution calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that we accept our courtesy resolution agenda.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the nineteenth, then taken second motion. Seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-second, Alderwoman from the nineteenth. Would you like to approach the dice?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We talk about our young people in so many different ways. But most often, we don't talk about them in a positive way. So you see, today, we are giving time to honor our state champions for Vashon High School and Northwest High School. What I know about being a champion is you must be dedicated to your cause, you must be prepared to execute, you must have a dream because you want to have a better quality of life. And it starts somewhere. So irregardless to whether you are a professional ballplayer in the future, or you start your own business, or you become a CEO in a corporate entity, and what I ask for is that you become a teacher in a school system and help prepare others. So today, I shall not read the whole resolutions, but I'll start off with saying to you, Vashon, we have seniors who have seen four years, and they've done well. We have others who will see another year. But at the end of the day, the boys' class four state basketball championship was earned on Saturday, March eighteenth, in Columbia, Missouri. We have the state-of-the-art basketball gym at Vashon High School. Nowhere else can we seat twenty-five hundred people. But you know, we haven't forgot you. You need a football stadium, too. So I congratulate you today on earning your championship at Vashon. And for Northwest High School, it's so wonderful because it is an academy of law. So for those who don't know and understand, and I wanted to have the alderperson from the twenty-seventh ward to come up and give you just a little bit more history. Because see, there's a lot of history there that we have ignored over there on Riverview. We have seen a lot of transition. You know, when they closed the school and reopened it, it was a big old plus for our city of St. Louis. Alderwoman Pamela Boyd is going to give you all the highlights about Northwest Academy of Law and that neighborhood.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Alderwoman Davis, for the surprise. And I appreciate it. But I am proud to have Northwest in my ward because Northwest, it was a middle school, it was a high school, and then we made it a law academy. And ironically, with the previous state representative that we have, Connie Johnson, she pushed for that, to become a law academy. And I was proud of that because those kids had a lot of history in that school, and we fought hard to hold on to Northwest. People feel that it's good to close a school, but not even as an alderperson, but as a community person, it's detrimental to a community when you close a school because those kids that's in those neighborhoods have no outs to go to. Northwest is a school that does graciously open their doors to the community and does tremendous outreach. They have after-school programs. They run summer programs. So they try to reach out to those youth to get them off the street, to keep them occupied, to do things that enhance our community. So I applaud Northwest Academy and the Wolverines for their championship. And I think they needed applause, and Vashon needs an applause because those young men work very hard. And I'm not going to stay up here too much longer because I will cry because I get real sentimental. So thank you, thank all of you young men for being who you are.
Coaches have a couple of words. And so, is it okay?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to stand up and say congratulations to Vashon and Northwest. Outstanding job, perseverance pays off. I'd like to echo a lot of what the Alderman woman from the twenty-seventh said. Northwest is my alma mater. I was a Blue Devil. I think now that's a different mascot. But still, you make me proud to stand here at the Board of Aldermen and be able to celebrate you knowing that that was a school that I once attended. Keep up the good work. The beginning is here, and you need to go ahead and take to the next level. You know, your future is bright. And good luck.
Alderwoman from the fifth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to rise and congratulate Vashon as well as Northwest also. I wasn't a Vashonite, but I always wanted to be. But my father was Vashon best dressed nineteen sixty-eight and most likely to succeed. So I vicariously went to the county. And I always rep V-side whenever, you know, I wasn't being bused to the county. But I would just like to commend you all on your efforts. I know with so many things going on today, it's not easy to succeed as you all have. And I would just like to really thank Vashon because every year when we deliver turkeys in the fifth ward, they are always out there, whether it's rain, sleet, or snow, helping us. So thank you so much and just keep pushing. And also, a big salute to the Irons basketball legacy at Vashon and in the history of this city. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth?
Good morning, students. As a former educator, I stand in awe of all the public schools. I worked in them thirty-two years, and I respect the work that the teachers do. And I expect that the students will go on and do great things. I hold you in my prayers every day. Thank you for your work.
Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, I also rise to congratulate both Vashon and... Oh, whoa, had a senior?
Northwest.
Northwest, okay, okay. And actually, when I was... I am a lawyer. And when I was a law student at Washington University, I actually did my... I did a year of intern student teaching at Vashon when Anthony Bonner was there. So that's how far back that goes. He was actually one of my students. And I just... That was when it was the old Vashon. And you do have a fabulous facility now. But I always tell people, it's not the facility, it's what's in the mind, that you can learn wherever. And our ancestors have taught us that. And I want to say to the young men that came from a law academy, you are student athletes. And student athletes means that you have the ability to not only be a great athlete, but also a student. If you want to continue your law career, because I remember when Connie Johnson was fighting for this, there is an opportunity for you to do so. I graduated from Washington University, and one of the things that I've done over the years is I fight for scholarships for African-American students. My class in nineteen... Not going to say what year. I had fifteen African-American students in it. The class before me had three. The class after me had two. When we left Wash U, we made sure that nineteen African-American students received full scholarships that increased with whatever tuition we increased because we found out if you got a scholarship, it didn't mean anything when your tuition increased ten and fifteen thousand dollars. So if that's something that you're interested in, I sure would like to get in contact with someone at Northwest to encourage you that you can go on and you can be an athlete and you also can be a lawyer. And I want to congratulate both of you all.
Alderman from the twelfth?
Mr. President, good morning, everyone. I just want to say congratulations to all you young men up there. Obviously, you have a plan with school and a good head on your shoulders. You know, people talk about, like myself, I went to public schools. I went to Lion School, Blow School in Cleveland. You know, I remember we had the McKinley Goldbugs and Northwest Blue Devils, the Vashon Tigers, Roosevelt Rough Riders, Soulland Tigers. So I'm kind of giving my age away. But we had some great rivalries with schools in football. And I used to love when Vashon would come down to St. Mary's and play because I betted on Vashon and my friends would be mad at me. But congratulations to everyone up there, and I hope your future is bright and good luck to you.
Alderman from the eighteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We forgive the alderman from the twenty-second for going to the wrong high school. I happen to be a proud graduate of Vashon High School.
Oh, uh-oh.
And Vashon was more than just a center of sports accomplishment. At the time I was there, it was also a hotbed of student activism. And so it has a great, in my opinion, glorious history of making good individuals who helped make a difference in the city of St. Louis. Being named after two attorneys that worked to make and to improve the quality of life of African-Americans. The major high school in the city that was named after people of color, two black men. And as students there, we worked. We were trying to get other high schools like that. We wanted a high school after Angela Davis, one named after Malcolm X, and one named after Dr. Martin Luther King. We were going for the gusto. We got Dr. King, but we still have Vashon. When they talked about closing it, it is these alumni that went and picketed downtown to make sure that that school remained. And I attended Vashon when it was at the factory up on Grant. We called it the factory on how old and raggedy the building was, but we were proud to be there and the accomplishments that were made. In seventy-one, we won state basketball against a school in Kansas City we hadn't even heard of. Some Casey Perseo showed up in St. Louis and tried to be tough. Vashon taught him a lesson. And so then, we are both proud and congratulate you for your work and recognize that there have been many of Vashonites that have sat in these chairs and represented this city and that you have individuals who are in your corner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from the third?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Good morning, y'all. Just wanted to say, I think it's pretty dope, you know, that you all have stayed on the path, man. We know how hard it is coming from where we come from to really stand something positive. And to see all you all up here. Everybody is bunched up, ain't nobody... You know, no elbow room. That's pretty cool, man. Everybody is close. It looks like a family. And that's what we need to continue to perpetuate in our communities, that we are a family regardless of where we live or where we come from. So, you know, I wanted to commend you all, and I wanted to make sure that you all know that you are welcome down here at the Board of Aldermen. Anytime you want to come, please don't make this the last time you all come. Me, Brother Mohammed, every alderman in this building will welcome you with open arms, man. We, you know, we have to start seeing more of us down here taking advantage of, you know, this building. And, you know, we have to start utilizing our resources. And you all are a resource to the community. So I commend you all. I'm sure everybody tips to add to, you know, you know, what to say. We appreciate you.
Alderman from the twenty-second?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, what resolution number are we on?
Your resolution's thirty... Madam Clerk, which courtesy resolution is that? The clerk will get it to you.
Okay, well, I'd like to ask that we honor these gentlemen by passing the resolution in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Before we move on, Alderman from the twenty-first, the youngest alderman in the chambers, I'm going to force you, stand up. Come on up and congratulate these young men. Come on up to the mic. He's the youngest man at the Board of Aldermen. Newly elected.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Vashon, congratulations. This is not only a win for one of our most historic public schools, but it's also a win for the city of St. Louis, and it's a win for the African-American community. Right now, you don't see this imagery that we see now. We don't see that on an everyday basis. So when we do it something special, it should always be acknowledged and honored. And I'm humbled by all of you. Congratulations again. And just so much I know, if y'all want to play ball, I go hoop every day at Ferg Round.
That's right.
If y'all really about that life. I seen my coaches in here a minute ago because I could whip him, too. Floyd Irons, he can get it, too. But congratulations. Thank you for coming down, and I'm humbled by y'all's presence.
See why we had to get that one in? Sometimes you got to force my... You know, growing up, young athlete myself, my coach used to always tell me, not only sports, but life is about two things. That's preparation and execution. You have to prepare for every day because every day is game day in life. So just by the success that these young men have achieved already today, we know that they have everything within them that it's going to take to go to that next step to be whatever they want to be in life. They can do it because it's been instilled in them. It came from their parents. It came from their households. And it's been reinforced by these coaches up here. So let's give these coaches a big round of applause and the parents a big round of applause for what they're doing also. And finally, as a father of four, I understand how difficult it is to raise kids and keep them on the right path and make sure that they're going the right way. And I know how rewarding it is and how it makes your heart feel good to see them succeed. So I look at all these young men and I think about their success, and I am so overfilled with joy about your success to this date. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all move on to do other great things. If you want to be doctors, if you want to be lawyers, you want to be elected officials, you can do it. You've shown that you have it in you. So continue the good work. Let's give them one more big round of applause. My ones here from the coaches.
He gonna wrap it up. First of all, I want to thank you guys for this opportunity, President, and the aldermen and the women of our community. I want to thank you for this moment. It's humbling. I first want to say that I'm also a product of Vashon High School, Vashon Basketball. I had an opportunity to play in state three of my four years. Or should I say, I played four years in the state and won three. So I also grew up in the Northwest community. So we are a family. And my kids probably learned to play Vashon Basketball. So again, we're tied in together. You catching me at a weird moment. I'm trying not to shed tears. I've been trying to do this for so long in front of my kids, trying not to shed tears. But it's a humbling moment. My kids are incredible kids. Very good kids in the classroom, very good kids in the hallway, very good kids of the community. Every single year, we do a summer camp for the kids of our community. And most of my basketball players volunteer and give back because throughout our season, so much has been given to them as well as this moment here. So again, I'm just humbled to be here today. Actually, this is my first time being in this office. So again, we appreciate it. We appreciate the moment.
Thank you. On behalf of Vashon High School, it's an honor for us to be here as well. I want to acknowledge Ms. Sharp, who's in the back, who's our athletic director over the St. Louis Public Schools. And my father, Floyd Irons, who is probably the number-one reason that Vashon Basketball is what it is today. On behalf of our kids, I mean, it's an honor to be here. Coach Jones pretty much summed it up for us as well. This is my first time here as well. You know, so many things you see in the news today about just, you know, with all the stuff going on in these neighborhoods, with all the stuff going on with a lot of young black kids. I see positive stuff, to see kids go out every day and promote excellence. And that's what both of these teams represent, our kids that have bought in and sacrificed a lot of their own personal and free time to become positive role models to a lot of people in our communities. And we're honored to be here. We're humbled to be here. And we look forward to watching these young men behind us, you know, continue to grow as positive citizens and into college and do wonderful things. And we really appreciate you guys having us and thank you for all you do.
We're going to have the team line up here, both teams line up here on the side. And any alderman who would like to be in the picture, come up and we'll try to get it set up. Coach, I understand that Coach Irons would like to say something? No, you can't speak from the floor. It's against the rules.
You can tell him we got open gym today, too.
Okay, yeah, Coach Irons, you have to come around today. And they want to... And the coaches want to let the alderman from the twenty-first know, Alderman Mohammed, that they have open gym today, so come on down. These are men ready for you. Yes, and family members also?
Good morning. I want to first thank the... Again, I want to thank the President plus all the aldermen, all the persons because I heard something the other day that it's not aldermen. And, you know, we have women here, so we say alder persons now. I want to just say that naturally, I am proud of both Gerald Jones and Tony for what they have accomplished and definitely all the kids. But I also want to say that, you know, sometimes you do certain things and people have a tendency to take it for granted, that these things that they have done is automatic. What they have done is a tremendous feat. And I want them to always remember that what they have done cannot be taken away from them. They also set history. This is the first time that two St. Louis Public High School have gone to state and have won a state title in the same year. And that's a tremendous feat. And that's something. You know, I played high school at Vashon High School. I came back to coach at Vashon High School. But when I played high school, I did not have the opportunity to play in a state game for four years. Most of what I accomplished became when I became a coach. So I didn't know how it feels to play in a state high school game as a player. And again, I want you to always remember you have done something that so many people have tried to do over so many years. And a lot of times, there could have been many state tournament champions coming from the St. Louis Public Schools, but the problem existed that they lumped us in the same district so only one could get out. And that's unfortunate. So again, I want to congratulate you and I want to thank the alder persons for honoring these individuals. And again, never forget from whence you've come. And you could be doing a whole lot of things. And we know there are a whole lot of things that our kids are more privy to than I had the opportunity. And for you to stay the course and to listen to your coaches, you should be commended. So again, thank you.
The... And then, any family members, please come up? The picture is being taken by the camera with the red light. All right. All right, let's get the... All right, let's get the... No, I don't remember the name. He's looking, he's... Coach Irons, could you please go? Uh, Ms. Sharp, could you join us up here also? Ms. Sharp? Let's give them all one more big round of applause. Congratulations. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. With that, we're back to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from 22nd.
Mr. President, members of board, my honored guest today is Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Alderman from 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, my special guest today is Ken Franklin with By State Development.
Alderman from 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my honored guest Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Alderman from 14th.
President, members of board, I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, Jeff Hans and Keith Taylor from the Carpenters Regional Council.
Alderman from 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, recognize my honored guest, Mary Ann Jackson, a resident in my community that's worked hard to push for the betterment of our ward and my best friend, my husband, Nathan Boyd.
Alderman from 1st.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the, uh, members of the board, you all don't know this, but, uh, Alderman from the 27th and I share a best friend. I'd like to have my, as my honored guest, Mr. Nathan Boyd, who is not my husband, but the next best friend.
Alderman from 21st.
Mr. President, members of the board, today is my honored guest. I'd like to have my old college professor and the assistant dean at Hurstville State University, Dr. Daily Davis.
Dr. Davis, welcome. Alderman from 14th.
14th?
Yeah, I said 14th.
Oh, I thought you said 13th. Okay, good morning, Mr. President, again. I'd like to have as my honored guest, Steve Spreck from Communication Workers of America, Local 6300, and Gary Otten, Field Representative, uh, from Painters District Council 58.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Alderman from 10th, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we're gathered here on May 19th, on this day in 1962, Marilyn Monroe sang Happy Birthday to President John F. Kennedy. I'm sure we've all seen that. On this day in 1536, Queen Anne Boleyn found out that adultery was something you could lose your head over. But most importantly, today is National Ride Your Bike to Work Day, otherwise known as Scott Ogilvy Day. Thank you.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for the approval of the May 5th minutes.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
Dispense with line items, line items seven through 10, first reading of board.
Board Bill 35, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and ordinance protecting victims of automobile theft from paying storing, towing, and administrative fees directly related to recovery of a stolen automobile by amending ordinance 64668, approved June the 11th, 1999, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 36, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and ordinance mandating that the Director of Parks Recreation and Forestry shall cause the construction of four well-lit basketball courts in Forest Park by October the 1st, 2017. That's the extent of our first readings.
Alderman from 1st.
Mr. President, members of board, I'd move to suspend the rules, so I might introduce Board Bill 37.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 1st, uh, seconded by Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers. Ald, Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Pam Boyd. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Twenty-six, aye vote.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the 1st. Madam Clerk, please read the, um, forward for Board Bill 37.
Board Bill 37, introduced by Alderman Sharon Tyus and Alderman John Collins Mohammed, and ordinance authorizing directing the Parks Recreation and Forestry Director to provide to the members of the Board of Alderman within 30 days of this ordinance becoming law, comprehensive list of all Confederate statues, Confederate memorials, Confederate monuments, and Confederate fa- flags located in any of the parks owned and operated by the City of St. Louis.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 37 to Parks.
So noted.
Reference.
That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 35, to the Parks Committee, Board Bills 36 and 37, that's the extent of reference to committees. The tran- the following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee. Board Bill 27, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Enterprise Leasing Company lease agreement between the city and enterprise leasing, granting to the lessee subject to and in accordance with the terms, covenants, conditions of the lease agreement, certain rights and privileges within connection with the occupancy and use of the lease premises, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 28, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute the Common Use Airport Club concession agreement between the city and airport terminal services doing business as wingtips, granting to the concessionaire subject to in accordance with the terms, covenants, and conditions of the agreement, certain rights and privileges within connection with the occupancy and use of the premises, which is defined and more fully described in Section 201 of the agreement, that was approved by the Airport Commission, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 29, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Air- Airport, to enter into and execute the Union Electric Company doing business as Ameren Missouri lease agreement between the city and Union Electric, granting to the lessee certain subject to and accord- in accordance with the terms, covenants, and conditions of the lease agreement, certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill Number 12, sponsored by Alderman Conway and President Reed, and ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for depositing its general revenue fund for a calendar year ending December the 31st, 2017, and remaining uncollected, and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in the general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June the 30th, 2018. All such revenues for the general revenue fund in the treasury through the issuance by the city its tax and revenue anticipation notes and the acquiring of credit enhancement, if necessary, in order to lower the cost of such borrowing, prescribing the form and details of such notes, authorizing and approving such, certain documents and other actions and containing an emergency clause. Following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill Number 30, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Taylor and Kennel Lee by regulating all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Taylor at Kennel Lee and regulating all northwestbound traffic traveling on Kennel Lee at Taylor and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 17, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorably designate this section of St. Louis Avenue between Semple and Arlington as Reverend Reginald D. Rogers Senior Avenue. Board Bill Number 32, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for travel on the irregular portion of East West Alley, west of Sarah and continuing westwardly, uh, and being bounded by Pappin', Sarah, Shoto, and Towman. Board Bill 33, sponsored by Alderman, Alderman Spencer, and ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Chippewa and Marine by regulating all eastbound traffic traveling on Chippewa at Marine and regulating all northbound traffic traveling on Marine at Chippewa and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of our second readings.
Uh, dispense with line item 14, uh, perfection consent.
Board Bill 30, 13, sponsored by Alderman Howard, and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Neosho and Atkins by regulating all northbound, northwestbound and southeastbound traffic traveling on Neosho at Atkins and regulating all northeastbound traffic traveling on Atkins at Neosho and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 15, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Hoffman and Clifton by regulating all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Clifton at Hoffman and regulating all eastbound traffic traveling on Hoffman at Clifton and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 16, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Bothhold, Berthold, and Graham by regulating all southbound traffic traveling on Graham at Berthold and regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Berthold at Graham and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 24, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to vacate travel on a 20-foot wide east-west and 15-foot wide north-south unapproved alley bounded by Penrose, Broadway, Angelica, and I-70 in the city. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 6th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Number 2, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance by the city of its airport revenue refunding bonds, St. Louis Lambert International Airport, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $240 million in one or more of the series to affect the refunding of a portion of the city's outstanding airport revenue bonds. The issuance of the city of its airport revenue bonds, St. Louis Lambert International Airport, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $70 million in one or more series as part of the bonds approved by the voters in 1991 and 2003, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 2.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
No, all right, we have to perfect it first.
Let's perfect it first.
Yeah.
I move for perfection of Board Bill Number 2.
It's been moved by Alderman from the ni- seconded by Alderman from the 12th and 13th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 19th, any discussion on the bill?
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 2. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the 19th, you're now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for Board Bill Number 2. Uh, move it to the third reading consent calendar, please.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 2nd, that we suspend our rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill Number 2 down to third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Boyd. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway. Twenty-six, aye votes.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 19th, and suspend the rules for purposes of moving Board Bill Number 2 to third reading consent. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Number 2 on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 2.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Approval of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 13th, I mean, 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. It's been a request for, now we need a, been a request for previous roll. Here are no objection, motion carries. Third reading, report of enrollments.
We have none.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill Number 2.
All other business being suspended. All other business being suspended, present shall in open session affix his signature here to to then that these may become law. Lisa? I'm waiting on the bill. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution Number Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, the enterprise zone for 21st Street Properties.
Alderman from the sixth. Alderman from the sixth. All right, I guess Alderman from the sixth, I have to bring it back up next week, second reading.
We have none.
Miss Lance, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
On Monday, Ways and Means Committee meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the leisure room, please see the attached sheet. Also, Public Safety meeting at 10 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, Housing Committee meeting at 9 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, at 8:30 a.m., is a Ways and Means Committee meeting, please see the attached sheet, and that's in the leisure room. Also, on Thursday, is a full board meeting at 10 a.m. in the chambers. On Friday of next week, there are no meetings. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any, Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to call a Health and Human Services meeting for May 30th at 9:30 a.m., we'll be talking about the animal shelter and other Health Department updates, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman, any, Alderman from the eighteenth, discussion?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to correct that the Public Safety Committee meeting should be Tuesday, not Monday.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, Tuesday.
So noted.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce again that on this coming Monday, from 11 a.m. to 7 p.m., we will have the Construction Industry Expo. It's, the event itself is located at 23rd and Cass, we've had the opportunity to pass out the information to all the Alderman persons, we hope they connect with their residents to make sure that they know these opportunities are available, and I also wanted to thank Dr. Suggs and the San Goso American Newspaper for the Section D that was done that talked about career opportunities, not only in the construction industry, but healthcare, IT, cybersecurity, and everything else that you can think of, it is a great issue, and we can use that section to do some education in our communities and get some people on the right career path to find good jobs. Again, I want to say thank you to all of the industry representatives that are supporting this initiative, and all the business managers that are here today, see me before you leave, thank you.
All right, thank you, any further announcements, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, this weekend is Indy Hop, which as you know is a celeb, this is the sixth year where we're celebrating local breweries and local businesses, both in the Cherokee Street District and the Grove, so come down and join us, it's tomorrow, May 20th, from 1 to 7 p.m.
All right, excellent. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Mr. President, and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to announce the Bevo Bizarro will take place tomorrow from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. in the wedge at the Sebi Fountain on Graboy, on 5,000 Graboy at Morgan Ford. Come on down, they're going to have food trucks, we're going to have a little dog contest, and lots of things to root through and look for to buy, some crafts, some memorabilia, and a little bit of everything, Bevo Bizarro.
All right, excellent. Any further announcements, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the fourth be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Thursday, May 25th, 10 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Stand.